It's at 6:30 on October 16th. I'm going to start the zoning order of appeals off with the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
According to Master, we're watching chapter 38, section 20F. This meeting is being recorded. First hearing tonight is... Okay. An administrative appeal of John Sylvia Jr., Linda Gada, and Kenneth Sylvia, applicants and trustees of Joyce P. Sylvia Revocable Trust from the determination by the zoning enforcement officer that commercial activities are being conducted onsite in a residential agricultural district in violation of zoning by law, section 5. Property is located in 1017 Sodom Road, Westport, Mass., and shown on Sessos Map 78Y10. So the way we're going to run the hearing is I'm going to have the petitioner come up, provide whatever information is pertinent to this petition. At that time, the board will then question the petitioner. Once the board has completed questioning the petition, then I'll open up to the general public. So whosoever's representing this appeal can come up and sit here. And whenever you talk, just identify, name and address. And voting on this will... And this is a majority vote. Oh, no, this is a supermajority. This is a four... You need four affirmative votes. And it will be Jerry Catino, Constance Gee, myself, Roger Menard, George Stellus, and Cynthia Kozekowicz.
All right.
So, name and address and then...
John Sylvia Jr., 991 Sodom Road. So the property's been in the family for 100 years at least, and both of our parents passed away recently. We got the trust. So some of these activities that are there have been going on for 15 to 20 years. There's never been a complaint, never nothing I get that some of the activities aren't right. But we sold 100 acres to the Westport Land Trust, and the rest is going into APR to keep it farmed. We're trying to keep Westport the way it is. And then we just, like, harassed to get out instantly. We already know we're getting out in June. And when somebody comes to me and says, "This activity has to leave, this activity has to leave, but that one can stay," to me, that's wrong. I don't care if they're all wrong across the board. If one has to leave, they all have to leave.
I'll read to you the letter from... For those who don't know, you know, what the issue here is...
I think 99...
I'll read the letter from...
People are from me.
...of Sousa, the zoning enforcement officer. Subject ceases to cease order zoning violation 1017 Sodom Road, Westport, Mass., to the trustees of Joyce P. Sylvia Revocable Trust. During a recent observation while passing the property located at 1017 Sodom Road, it was noted that business operations appear to be taking place within a residential agricultural zone district. Upon further investigation, it was found that multiple commercial activities are incurring onsite in violation of the Westport zoning bylaws. Specifically, tanker trucks believed to be used for transport of pool water are being parked and possibly operated from the premises. Two separate businesses appear to be stockpiling, transferring commercial landscaping materials, including mulch and gravel, and utilizing the site as a transfer or storage station. These activities constitute commercial use that is not permitted within residential agricultural zones and are therefore in direct violation of section 5 of Westport zoning bylaws. You are hereby ordered to immediately cease all business operations and commercial use of the property. You are granted seven days from receiving this notice to bring property into compliance. Please advise that failure to comply may result in issuance of daily fines up to $300 a day. As authorized under Massachusetts General Act, Chapter 40, Section 21D, each day the violation continues will be considered a separate offense. Furthermore, please note that the stockpiling materials such as mulch and gravel also requires a soil permit from Westport Conservation Commission. Failure to obtain the proper permit constitutes an additional violation subject to enforcement. And again, this is from...
No.
Can you identify exactly what is going on on that property?
So there was two water trucks there from C&amp;L Water, which have moved now. Serious Business was here today. They had firewood there. He's had sand, he's had gravel. We've had the loom, and then Potter Construction is in the back with the same operation. So when I met Ralph on the property, he basically said, "That one's going to go, that one's going to go, that one can stay." I know what the letter says, but when I'm told to me, "Two can stay, one can go," it's wrong.
So what businesses are actually being performed on that property?
So the water trucks were parking there because where they were, they don't have room to park. So they were parking there.
Are they continued... Are they going to be continued?
They're gone. So as of June...
Are they ever coming back?
No. So June 1st of next year, everything has to stop because we sold it to the APR. So the land's going into APR, and everything has to be, again, agricultural. So we were told everybody, June 1 of next year, you have to leave anyways. So everybody had started moving stuff, and then this came out. So it was like, well, these businesses have been here for 17, 18 years. You can't leave in seven days. When you've got 10,000, 20,000 yards of gravel onsite, you can't move it in seven days because where do you put it? You know what I mean? So...
So what is your plan?
As of... When it goes into APR, it's going to be agricultural only with the state.
No, I mean, to get rid of all this material.
So 75% of it's already gone.
75%. So how long do you think it's going to take you to get rid of the rest of the 25%?
I can't answer that question because it's not my material, so I can't answer the question. Lenny, you'd have to answer that question.
Glenn Potter from A.J. Potter and Sons. We operate a loam compost mixing complex there. We don't crush rock there. We just mix the topsoil, compost, different types of topsoil to end up with a decent product in the end, and then we take it to our pit here on Main Road, which is legal, and screen it there, process it there. And we probably got... A lot of it's gone. Skip, how much you got left?
About 4,000 yards.
About 4,000 yards.
Right.
And we're slowly moving it out, and we'll certainly be gone by June 1st. We have to be, it's not a problem. I offered, when his father, who was a good friend of mine, I grew up with him, and I also more so with his mother, and his father wanted to give us a place to work, and he'd get some money for rent to pay his taxes, and we went there. But John was not... I asked about getting the permit, he was not in favor of that at all. He said, "I don't see a problem with it, it's my farm, and I can do what I want." And that's a fact. And so therefore, we never got the permit. You know your father.
Yeah.
This has never been a legal operation?
Never.
Okay.
I offered to make it so, but he didn't want any part of it. We needed the area to work in, he needed the money, so we did it. And we are pulling out little by little, but there's no manufacturing of anything there. It's just a stockpile area and a mix.
How quickly could you pull it out?
Probably within the next couple of months. Winter's coming, we're not going to... The whole operation there is topsoil, compost, topsoil, so therefore, come December, it's gone. That's about it.
Attorney Blake, you want to...
Sure, I'm happy to...
Mike Ben on this. Attorney Blake, he represents the town.
If you've ever been to these, I've come to a fair amount of these anyways. Yeah, I'm Jeff Blake from town council from KP Law. I think what you have here is, you know, frankly, I don't think anybody is contesting that they can legally do this. I think it's one of these, we've been doing it for a long time, so we ought to be able to still do it. The zoning enforcement officer gave them seven days. You, in an appeal like this, you step into the shoes of the zoning enforcement officer. I think that you could, based on the size of the operation and what's there, say to yourselves, seven days is a little ambitious, and I think you could give them more time to remove all of the loam, all of the offending piles. It seems like they're...
Essentially cease all operations.
Essentially cease all operations in like 60 days. And as this gentleman pointed out, most of it is loam. You typically don't loam and seed during December, January, February, March. I guess you would... They would not be operating for April, May, well, April, May of next year. But I think if the board wanted to go that route, it could.
Okay.
Now, of course, you could also enforce the zoning enforcement officer's order and say, "Seven days." But I do think that it's not unreasonable for you to understand the gravity of what's there, and seven days is probably a pretty tall order to get rid of large piles of stuff.
I'd like to ask, which of the businesses were okay and which were not?
So C&amp;L Water could... Had to go, and Serious Business had to go.
Well, what's the second one?
Serious Business, it's on...
Oh, okay, seriously. Their excavation?
They do excavate and firewood. And the other problem with firewood, as far as I understand, being Chapter 61A, firewood counts as a source of income for agriculture. So if I want to stockpile 500 cords of firewood and sell it, I believe...
Okay, no, no, I'd like to get back to that.
Based on 61A.
I'd like to get back to that in a minute.
Okay.
What's the one that could be...
Potter Construction.
The Potters?
Yes, well, let me just...
Why was that?
Okay.
I can't answer that question because it wasn't my statement.
Okay, I'd like to pursue this a little bit because this is not the first time this sort of thing has come up. And what we have tended to do over time is, Dr. Manny Alexander up the road here, he got involved with this. We have determined that for farming operation, it's legal to do things like some of what you said, the loans, as long as it were from your own property.
Right.
But you couldn't bring in stuff because then that becomes this manufacturing.
Right.
To be honest with you, I think it's not very well-defined, and I think that we as a town, especially an agricultural town, we need to get a handle on this as to what is and isn't. Because you said, for example, that when the new people take over, you said APR, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It has to be done with agriculture.
Right.
Okay? But what's defined under that agriculture?
Right.
Because maybe the new people could still carry on this if they chose to.
Right.
And so forth. And I just think there's too many gray areas in this for us to make a really good decision out of this. But I think whatever we do, it should be well thought out and determined, maybe working with the Ag Commission or whatever, and looking at the state laws in terms of what their definition of agriculture is and so forth. As you just said, firewood, for example, yes, it is. But again, I believe it's based on wood from your own property.
Right, which we have a lot of...
Not bringing in wood and cutting it up and so forth, which I think is what's been probably...
Now, the wood that's, yes, darn, is all coming from my woods, isn't it? 95% of it.
Yeah. So anyway, I think we need to... We, as a town and a zoning board, need to really look at this and make sure we're not jumping the gun and determining something...
Right.
That is... Should be allowed, is not allowed. My own personal thought is, if you're saying that next June, this all changes, and is that pretty much set in stone?
We've signed the purchase and sales already, so...
My own personal thought is that we continue this hearing until next June so that it kind of makes things go away. And the reason I think that is that, in the meantime, it would give us an opportunity to look into this longer and do the right thing, you know, with the agricultural community. And then at the same time, if Lenny wants to slowly move his stuff up, then, you know, fine. But I don't think there's a lot of that activity going on during the winter, as our attorney has indicated.
Right.
Those are pretty slow times. So I don't think it would hurt anybody to do it. If these operations have been there for 20, 25 years, another four or five months isn't going to mess things up, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay? So I think we need to find out what really is legal and what is not. I mean, I understand the manufacturing thing, which is what our law says, if it's taking things from outside in. But there are a lot of gray areas where maybe we're not too sure whether you're bringing something in, out, and so forth. You take a carpenter who was building picnic benches, you know, on his property, and it's not zoned for that.
No.
Well, he's bringing stuff in, isn't he? He's bringing lumber in to make it. So, you know, there's gray areas here, and I just think we need to do the right thing by giving this time to settle out. And I don't know if it's legal to continue it for that length of time, but that's my thought, is a way of getting around this, taking pressure off of you guys, and maybe at the same time, giving some better direction to the land conservation or the APR. Is land conservation going to do agriculture also?
Yeah, it's got to go in for agriculture.
Same idea, to give them some guidance, some decent guidance. That's my thought.
Yeah, I want to know when it does go strictly... Well, it is agricultural, but what can we do there and what can we not? I mean, I grew up on the farm. My father would have piles of dirt because he liked to plow up rocks. That was his thing. So when you pick up a rock the size of this table, you've got to fill it with something.
Yeah.
You don't go to Home Depot and buy 50 bags of dirt. You have a pile of dirt, you fill the hole, you smooth it out, and you're back to a field. Because if you don't, and you leave a hole this big, every time it rains, it's going to wash away. I mean, there was always dirt, rocks, firewood, forever. I mean...
Your father was well-known and well-liked in the agricultural community.
Yeah. I mean, we're trying to keep it the way it is because Westport is already... You look at the other half of Sodom Road, it's, to me, is disgusting, looking at all those houses, you know? Trying to keep it farmland, and, I mean, we've been approached by multiple builders to sell it. We didn't go that way, you know? We take less money, we take... Do it, keep it Westport. I mean, we grew up here and we plan on staying.
I'm just... I want to advise everybody exactly what an administrative appeal is. I read you the letter from the zoning enforcement officer that was essentially ceased and ceased.
Yeah.
What the petitioner is essentially asking us to overturn that.
Right.
Saying that overturn it by meaning that the zoning enforcement officer was not correct in interpreting our bylaws. That's all that we're here to determine. Because it's an administrative appeal, what you're saying is Ralph was... The zoning enforcement officer was wrong in how he interpreted the bylaw. That's what we're here for. Now, I have a question for Attorney Blake.
Sure.
I mean, this is going to be a cut and dry whether or not Ralph was correct in his interpretation. But even if we were to say, "No, he interpreted correctly," can we then amend it to increase to, from a, like you said, from a seven-day period to 30 or 60 or whatever period?
I think you can. In my opinion, you can do that. You step into the...
We could, again, I'm just throwing out, as an alternative, we could say, "No, the zoning enforcement officer was correct," meaning that we, you know, that we... Your petition is not granted. However, we can amend his cease and desist order to allow for a greater period of time.
That is correct. That is... That's exactly what I... Yes.
Okay, so it's kind of... We've never done this before. Again, I'm just saying, I, you know, we're going to have to vote on this and talk about it.
Yeah.
We've never actually rejected a petition with a... With essentially a condition.
Well, I think essentially what you're doing is you are upholding Ralph's... The zoning enforcement officer's order in part.
In part.
And, you know, I don't know... Yeah, I guess it would be overturning it in part. In other words, saying that we feel as though it is against the bylaw to store large piles. It's essentially a commercial use. It's not an agriculture, this is just for this property. But at the same time, we recognize that there's a significant amount of material there, and that seven days is probably not a reasonable amount of time for these guys to get rid of it.
I'd like to understand Ralph's logic. So he said the pool company and Serious Business, who had firewood there, were not appropriate, yet you said that Potter's operation was.
Yeah, why?
And if so, Serious Business, if I heard correctly, at least the pool company has...
The pool company's left completely.
And Serious Business is on their way out.
He's about 85% gone.
Right.
Can't talk from the audience.
So the only issue, I think, is with that, is that we can give Serious Business some more time to get out, make clear that nobody else can come back in. And I think, according to, and I like to hear Ralph's logic of why Lenny's Potter's operation was okay, then we don't have to do anything about that, and he's just going to get out by June because they're selling the property.
Island of landscaping and mulch is not allowed on the...
It's not allowed on the property, but what I've gotten, when I talked to the Potters, it was they had to replicate what they've been doing. They had to replicate it by the time the land is closed off. In other words, they've done where they are in the back.
All right, just one thing. Are any of the businesses there allowed?
No.
No?
Okay.
Period.
All right.
So why... I'm sorry, so I still don't understand why the differentiation between...
Because he had... They... The Potters have to replicate stuff that they've done in the back. Back was worked on more, the soils were pulled out, so they've got to replicate, all that was done back there.
What do you mean replicate? You mean...
Put it back the way it was, pretty much the way it was.
Why is that, Ralph? Did the Soil Board require that?
I don't know who required that.
Did they go to the Soil Board for their rules?
I don't know. From what I understand, the Conservation Commission issued no soils permits for that.
Okay.
What's going on there?
If I can answer that question? When we initially made a contract with Mr. and Mrs. Sylvia, the agreement was we would strip the area off, stockpile the topsoil, and when we were done, put it back.
Okay.
The reason is, if you just left it topsoil, it would just turn into mush in the spring and the winter. So not that we go in in the winter, but it would. So we stripped it all off, it's stockpiled, and it's going to go right back in place.
Okay.
I don't understand that process. Why do you strip off topsoil, put it in a pile, and then put it back? I mean, why?
Because the topsoil in that area there was probably somewhere around 12, 14 inches
thick, and if, when it gets wet or freezes and thaws, it just turns... There's no substance to it. However, the clay layer down below the subsoil, below the topsoil, is much more firm, and it compacts with traffic and all that. It compacts well. It's not gravel, but it compacts well. The topsoil itself is just, there's no body to it.
Right, right.
So that's the reason.
So you couldn't drive trucks and stuff over it?
No. No.
So the clay underneath is what you...
We're working on it.
Taking and...
No, we're working on the clay. We're not taking any of it.
You're using that as the roadway.
Yeah.
So what is it that you actually were taking out off the...
Material that we bring in from other job sites that we buy. We buy compost, we buy all kinds of topsoil, some sandy, some clays.
So you removed the loam just so you could work in that area?
We removed the loam, the original loam, Mr. Sylvia's loam, put that in the stockpile, and we brought material in. That's what we process it. We mix the different... There's sandy loam, there's clay loams, there's dark loam, there's light loams, and we bring in compost from the kingfisher pit, and we mix that compost with the soil to get a consistency that we want.
So it's similar to a gravel operation, like you have a bone, but with different kind of product?
Yeah, it's all topsoils, topsoils and compost.
So I still don't understand why that would be okay and the other...
Well, the way I... It's the way I understood it. I understood that they'd done something back then, they had to replicate, they had to put it back together.
That part of it was okay.
Right. That part.
But the business itself was not.
Is not, okay.
No.
Now, the stockpiling was okay.
In that case.
But bringing in the material from other places was not okay?
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
And obviously, given the time of the year, you're not going to be bringing any more material in.
No.
So all we really need to do is allow Serious Business to get the remainder of their product out and for you to... For you to put back...
Restore, yeah.
The loan.
But there's no town required obligation. It's an agreement that we had with his parents.
That's correct.
And we honor that.
Yeah.
I have a question. So if you're given 60 days, you can do everything. You can get what you need off, and you can replicate.
We can... And 60...
Replicating is not really our problem. Getting the stuff off is our problem because that's the business part of it. How he fixes the land is between him and the owner. Okay? We don't require that.
We would fix the... We still have materials there that we're mixing and using, but it's greatly diminished now, so we're in a process of getting that out of there. But we will spread the existing topsoil, Mr. Sylvia's topsoil, starting in the spring, probably sometime mid... It depends how the spring goes, mid-April, early-May. Put it down, seed it down, done.
Right. But you... But you can get what you need to do in 60 days to leave?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, there's going to be a process of screening the material that Sylvia's had, because it had rocks, which, I'm saying, doesn't matter. But the materials that we brought in will be out in 60 days.
That's what... Right, yeah. Because that's the business part of it.
Correct.
The rest of it is the land part of it.
Yeah.
And that's between the landlord and whatever.
Right.
It's not a zoning issue. And Serious Business, you can be off of there in 60 days.
No, no, my...
Name and address.
Chris Fortier, the owner of Serious Business, 106 Barney's Joy Road, South Dartmouth. So I have already removed most of the commercial aspects of the property. There is no longer aggregate, anything like that, septic sand, that's removed. There is firewood, there is compost, and some wallstone, which I do believe should fall under agriculture. And I am the owner of a farm, and I do sell that agriculturally, so I don't see why that sort of thing couldn't stay on the site.
Was that on the farm to begin with?
Quite a bit of the stone was on the farm. A lot of the compost is. We do bring in manure, we mix it. That sort of thing gets spread on my own farm. It does get sold, compost. The wood chips in question, which are being referred to as mulch, goes to multiple farms around the community, used for cow bedding, my own cow bedding, goes to J. Tripp, Rich Sisson, different farms around town in the muddy season.
Okay, just one simple question. Can you, in 60 days, remove the stuff that was not on the property, begin with?
That would probably be a tall order. I guess so.
Yeah, okay. Well, the firewood that's there came from the property.
Right, firewood came from the farm, and it can stay there.
Right, the rocks.
And sell it because that is a farm-related activity.
I'd say 75% of the rocks came from the farm. I mean, there's rocks everywhere.
If that was on the farm, isn't that correct? If it's on the farm, that's part of farming.
It could be an agricultural use, right?
The firewood is agricultural.
You can't bring firewood in, resell it.
Right, again, yeah.
See, that's part of why I'm saying the definition is important, what is and isn't allowed on a farm. As he just said, the mulch goes to farms for farming, and so forth.
But it wasn't originated on that farm.
All we're talking about is what originated a farm and what didn't.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that the, it's still agricultural, and that's allowed, just like the potters for years have been taking gravel out of the Bone Farm, okay? It's not farm, they're, they're, they're taking gravel out, right on the curve, Hicks Bridge. And I'm not sure what the current status is, but I do remember quite a number of years ago, instead of doing little pieces, they would do a couple of acres at a time, come to the zoning board, and we would give them the ability to do that. They also had to go to the Soil Board and get work done that way. But at some point, I don't know exactly when, maybe Lenny would know, but we said, wait a minute, why do they gotta keep coming in here for two acres and three acres and so forth? And my recollection, just my memory, says that the last time they came, we gave them the ability to do seven acres, and we're all defined where this would be. We gave them, I think, the ability to do seven acres without having to come back all the time. And since then, we don't see them, I say hello to them, that's it, but I haven't seen them as a zoning board, so I don't know whether they've already done the seven acres or whatever. Similar kind of thing. They're taking this stuff and they're making something out of it that's for agriculture.
But he's doing it actually in a commercial property.
I understand, well
That makes a difference.
What do you mean he's doing that in a commercial property?
Lenny's in a commercial
He has a commercial property on Main Road.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm talking about Sirius Business with their mulch, what we're calling mulch. The, you know, I guess they grind this stuff up or whatever, he's not doing that on Main Road, right?
No, 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 that's
No, okay, so that's what I'm trying, I'm saying there are examples that I think are gray areas that we ought to
I don't see any gray areas here.
Uh-uh, neither.
I don't see, this is an administrative appeal, there's no gray, it's either they ran a business or they aren't, and they obviously ran a business, it's a matter of how do we get them to comply with Ralph's order? And that's, that's all we're here for.
But I don't see it that way. I see it that we don't know is a legal business for a farm, in a farming community, to take logs and make them into mulch and so forth, for agricultural farms.
It's not a commercial operation, he's saying it's an agricultural operation. Grind up the wood, make wood chips to go to a farm, is it a commercial operation or is it an agricultural?
It all comes from your farm.
I mean, I could also say
If it all comes from your farm, then it's an agricultural, if you're bringing it in and taking it somewhere, and doing something on your property, that's the commercial part. Whatever you do on your own property, as your father always says, you got a right to do, but it's on your property, you're doing it.
And it comes from your property.
Coming from your property.
Like moving forward, everybody takes all their dirt out, and, again, we dig up a rock the size of a truck, I can't bring dirt from anywhere else, you're telling me, because it has to come from my farm.
No, you can bring it in.
You can't sell it.
You can bring it in.
Attorney, you were gonna
I was just gonna say that under your zoning bylaw, farm enterprise means a farming operation that is entitled protection under general law forty-eight, section three. Forty-eight, section three has been interpreted to say exactly what we're saying here tonight is that firewood is an agricultural use, when you're logging your own land.
Right.
When you start bringing it in and processing it on your land and selling it.
Does it say that?
It's not.
That's a business.
No, yours says, a farming enterprise is that protected under forty-eight, section three, and I'm telling you, the state, there are cases out there that say, the firewood cases that say, you can cut wood all day long on your own property, but if you're bringing it in, and you're cutting it, and you're splitting it, and you're selling it, it's no longer a protected agricultural use. Agriculture, under your bylaw says, bear with me. Agriculture and agricultural shall include farming in all of its branches, and cultivation and tillage of soil, darying, the production, cultivation, growing, and harvesting of all agriculture, aquaculture, floriculture, and horticultural commodities, and growing and harvesting of forest products upon forest land, right, that's your own land. The raising of livestock, including horses, the keeping of horses as a commercial enterprise, the keeping and raising of poultry, swine, cattle, and other domesticated animals used for food purposes, bees, fur-bearing animals, and any forestry or lumbering operations performed by a farmer who is hereby defined as one engaged in the agriculture or farming as herein defined, I gave you what the farming enterprise was, has it was defined, or on a farm as an incident to or in connection with such farming operations, including preparations for market delivery to storage, or to market, or to carriers for transportation to market. So again, I think that your definitions are consistent with how the state law is interpreted under forty-eight, section three, and that is that you can't stockpile from outside and sell, just like this gentleman right here is bringing in loam, processing it and selling it. I think that that's clearly not agricultural. Here, I mean, if you want to take him for his word, most of the wood is actually cut and processed on the, on the land, that's probably agricultural. The, what else did he have? He had firewood compost, wallstone, I mean, again, you know, if you're buying chips, bringing them on to the site, mixing them, and then selling them for cow bedding or whatever.
That's commercial.
Yeah, I think that it's outside of the definition.
But if you had your own logs and you were making
Tipping it and selling it, that's fine.
That's right.
Okay, well, I think we're opening a can of worms here, because in that case, we better deal with the, all of the tradespeople, which we definitely feel are allowed in a non-commercial area, we do it all, what was that, please?
Tradespeople, electricians
That's what I'm talking about.
Well, that's an accessory use.
That's different, that's different.
Why is it different?
Because there is zoning laws that is different.
No, why is it different?
I don't know why, I just know there's zoning laws, take care of that, I'll
I'll just use the example that I used earlier, there's better examples, but this fellow, and we have a couple in town that we know, at least three, who buy lumber, bring it to their property, non-commercial property, cut it up, put it together, and sell it to other people.
Then that's a problem.
Okay, so we should close them all up?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, then we better start doing it, because we have not been doing that all along. We allow that because it's a part of the trade.
We allow a lot in our community, because we don't enforce unless there's been a complaint. There's plenty, that's what we did with the Airbnbs, we did it, they were all illegal until we had a complaint, and then we had to deal with it, and now it's different, because we changed our zoning bylaws. So, it's a matter, I mean, do I agree with that? No, but that's, we are a small town who can't just go and give all these orders to all these operations
Well, that's why I'm suggesting a continuance
Well, no, I
To give us an opportunity to settle out some of these things.
But we've never done that before.
There's no reason.
We didn't, we didn't give the Airbnb, we didn't give the Airbnb a continuance until we changed our bylaws, so we can't, I don't think we could give a continuance here if we're thinking that we're changing our bylaws. Should we change our bylaws? I agree with you, Jerry, but I don't think we should do it in this instance, when we haven't done it in other instances.
Specifically, this is an administrative appeal.
Yes.
We gotta remember, this is administrative appeal.
All I got to say is, from
That's not, attorney, were you gonna?
I was just gonna mention, I think your analogy there, it's a different, I mean, whether or not that could be an accessory use, is part of that analysis, is it customary? So, what is accessory in Fall River, or New Bedford, or Akushnet, is, could be different than what is accessory here in Westport, because is it customary? Maybe those have been used, that type of accessory use has been used here for a hundred years, so it is customary in the zoning district. It would be okay.
So maybe some of that.
But they haven't proved that.
This isn't, this isn't an accessory use, the analysis, this is a flat, the use is, I don't think you can say that this is an accessory use to this property, right? This is the primary use of this property.
Jerry, I hear what you're saying, but really, to give a continuance for this, it doesn't seem, it doesn't make sense, it seems like a bad precedent, and, and the thing is, is that I think everybody here pretty much agrees that they can take care of it.
Well, that's what I was about to say.
I mean, so it's like, why make it into
Until, until they just clarify when they can do it, then I'm thinking otherwise, as long as we give them sufficient time
Yeah.
To get in line, and we're just hearing one of them say that that would be a tall order to do it in whatever they
Well, sixty days, but we could say, we could give it longer, we could say
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't care how we do it.
I think at minimum, we should give them to December thirty-first, but then we maybe wanna say, we wanna give them to April first, to give them some springtime, but you don't ever know what the weather's gonna be, so
Let's face it, they're not doing anything in January and February, so, you know, sixty days, you know, not even, you know, but again, that's a point of now making a decision, we're still in the, in the asking questions mode, and I'm not, if we're done asking questions, I'm gonna open it up to the public, unless, unless somebody else has a question, rather than how we're gonna handle it. I have it. Okay. So, sixty days, you need ninety, seventy, sixty?
To take off what you brought in, not necessarily that originated there, so if that firewood originated there, you don't gotta get rid of it until he tells you to.
I would like to see ninety days, at least, we do split firewood all winter, anyway.
But that's
If the firewood is not an issue, and that's, I guess that's up to Ralph, if that's not an issue, then there really isn't, other than a pile of compost, anything that really should be in violation, because the wallstone should be able to stay, the firewood should be able to stay, and really, the compost should be able to stay.
So you're not bringing in any of that stone?
I'm not hauling anything in, I've only hauled things out for, we figured out that we were gonna lose the property, you know, in the works, maybe a year ago, and everything has been getting depleted, that's the idea, so that we're not stockpiling stuff there, anyway.
So that shouldn't be a problem, because you're not moving a whole lot.
Right.
As long as you're not gonna come back and say you can't have this agricultural stuff.
That didn't originate on the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, just one more question would be, you guys say that if no one's complained about it, then you don't necessarily, we don't end up here. So, has someone actually complained about this, or is this somebody driving by?
Well, that's
Yeah, they did complain.
Yeah, they complained.
And do we have a name to go with that, or?
See, I, for all of the board of selectmen, I have to deal with any kind of complaint that comes across me, whether it be anonymous or not, and most of it is anonymous complaints, I figure I know where they're coming from, I couldn't say where they're coming from.
This is a board of appeals.
And just to make this clear, Ralph is both the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector. He can't spend his whole day looking for violations of zoning, so the only way that we understand that there's a violation of zoning is if somebody complains about it.
Or he stumbles upon it in his normal course of
He's got a hundred and fifty percent of his time just building inspector.
And occasionally, he does stumble upon zoning violations while he's doing his building inspection, and then he will address it, but the other stuff is that is brought to his attention.
I think it comes down to, right now, we're just asking for time to get rid of it.
Yes, okay.
It's not, is he right, probably, with the zoning? Probably is, I don't know if there's, if it's been here so many years, it's grandfathered in, I heard if it was more than ten, whether it's true or not, I don't know.
It's not true.
But, I don't know, I can't answer that, and basically, we're looking for
It's all gonna go away anyway, so it's just a timing issue.
Yeah, June first, it's gotta be gone to get that finalized with the state of Massachusetts. It has to be done.
And for Teleny's point, the topsoil has to be back, because they want it back.
Right, they're gonna do a final inspection before they'll disperse any funds.
So your agreement that, for the sale of the property, says that Sirius Business can't continue
They, no, they, basically, they can say, I have to rent it as agricultural, so if you're saying agricultural is go down in my woods, cut a tree, cut it up, split it, then that's agricultural.
He said that a lot of what he's got there is that.
Right.
So that means that he can continue
Correct.
Forever.
Correct.
With that fine.
Correct, as long as he don't bring it in
He'll run out of trees ultimately.
Right.
Run out of trees.
But you'll never run out of rocks.
He's gonna grow more trees.
In Westport, you never run out of rocks.
Well, no, no, you never run out of rocks.
No, you don't.
Which means you can run out of
Rocks you never run out of.
Rocks you never run out of.
So basically, I guess we're just down to the fact, we're looking to, we were hoping to get to June, when everything goes, because the winter, there's gonna be no operations anyways, so we're just trying to get it to where nobody gets stuck with a huge fine, and, I mean, I know it's, the water trucks are gone, that was the biggest complaint, the noise isn't there, but
Okay, okay, if I, I'm gonna open it up to the public, anybody have, anybody in the audience have a comment on this? No, wait, okay, name and address.
John Olivera, thousand and three Sodom Road, I live next door to the property.
Name again, please?
John Olivera.
Thank you.
John informed me that they have to be out of there by June. Like he said, the operation's been there for twenty years, there's never been a problem. Now, this one that's been brought up to Ralph, we know who it is and all that, doesn't make a difference, doesn't make a difference. If Mr. Potter don't bring anything in, and Sirius Business don't bring anything in, then it should be a problem at all. So that seven day
Right.
Was only if they were gonna bring stuff in. Right? If Sirius, in January, wants to go chop down the tree and split it, is he allowed to?
Yeah.
All the trucks, and that's gone, so
Can you say that again?
If Sirius Business wants to go down and chop down the tree in the back
They can chop any tree they want, yes, but there was a lot of material there that was brought in.
Right.
That has to be brought out.
Promise not to bring anything else in.
And
And get rid of everything that's been brought in.
Right, shouldn't be a problem, right?
Brought in.
Unless it's being, unless what brought in is gonna be used
Unless you're gonna use it.
Use it on the property.
On the property.
Right, so that seven day
That's basically
Is only if stuff was gonna be brought in.
No, it's removal of stuff that was brought in, and it's not going to be used, that has to be removed, because that's
In seven days.
Well, that's what
And that's what we're saying, was too short.
Right.
There wasn't enough time to do it in seven days.
Right.
Right.
So by giving them sixty or ninety days, and if they promise not to bring any more stuff in
It's fine.
Should be okay, right?
Yeah, well, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
I can't give you an answer now, that's what the board's gonna talk about.
Well, fair enough.
Anybody else?
I have a question, so I go up and down Sodom Road a lot, I live over there, and I was noticing, when I went to see the property, and I've always wondered about this, it might even be, I think it's a property that's like two down, it's ten fifty-five, it looks to me like they have a jet ski business.
Yeah.
Is that
Really?
That's not on my property.
No.
That have anything to do with your property?
No.
Well, it looks like, would that have anything to, so that has anything to do with the agricultural piece of this, because
That's his own house lot.
That's a separate issue.
It's a separate house lot.
They have different neighbors.
That's trades, public tradesmen.
Yeah. You go down a little, you go down a little more, and there's
I mean, it's right next
The angel shop's running.
Right, right next door.
Yeah, so I didn't know if that had anything to do
They don't do jet skis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got good deals on him, if you wanna buy one.
Any other, any other questions, comments, before, no? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, no? No, nobody? Okay, that's unanimous, all that means is now, we don't take any information in, we'll deliberate and render a decision.
Right.
I think this is obvious, that Ralph was correct in that they were running a business, So the administrative appeal is appropriate. I, you know, I understand the, the complication of trying to comply with the seven days is, is, you know, moving that much stuff just can't be done. So I'm in favor of, of giving him, of, of rejecting the appeal of the, rejecting the petition for the appeal, but, but, I mean, how are we going to say this?
You, you would, you would deny it with respect?
Deny the cease and desist, deny the appeal of the cease and desist.
With respect to the violations of zoning.
Zoning.
But you would grant the appeal with respect to the seven days and make it.
And make it sixty or whatever.
December thirty first, whatever you decide.
Yeah, so.
I'll make that motion.
But to, to when? To, I said sixty days or December thirty first?
Ninety days.
Well, ninety days is in January. I think December thirty first makes sense because it's seventy something, seventy, seventy something days.
As long as it's reasonable, then they can do it.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to be able to pull a whole lot in January and February anyway.
That was, that's so, to, to December thirty first is seventy-seven days. So nothing's going to happen in January because we're going to, the only time it gets snow, if it gets snow, is January, right? So as long as they get everything out that was brought in by December thirty first, okay, and you can.
That was part of my motion.
And you can, yeah, exactly. I knew that. I'm just helping you out here, Jerry, I know. And then anything that is, you know, if you're, if there's rocks that were pre-existing that are in a pile, then, you know, that's fine. If there's, if there's more lumbering or whatever you call it going on, because obviously through the winter, people need firewood, as long as it's coming from the property, it's okay, right?
That's a very long, uh.
Motion. So.
No, I, I was, I was in a motion. So they have, like, I'll make it shorter. They have until December thirty first, twenty twenty-five, to remove all materials that were not native to the property.
And cease all operations.
Of bringing.
Commercial operations.
All, all, all commercial operations, correct. So this is going to be like, this will be then suggesting a two-part decision that we reject the petition for the administrative appeal of the cease and desist order and we grant the appeal of the, how do we put the?
Conducting business in a residential.
Seven days to remove, to, to be in compliance and modify it to, to have all the materials removed by December thirty first. All commercial operations to cease. The other thing we need to talk, the only thing is, is then, we have to be careful about times of operations. I certainly don't want him doing stuff at two in the morning to do this. So I suggest then that we put in the normal business hours of.
The town's bylaw.
Bylaw specifies, I think, seven, seven AM to six PM. For the, for the removal process and.
Monday through Saturday, is it?
And.
Or Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
And half a day on Saturday.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. Yeah.
If that's the town bylaw, you could say consistent with.
Consistent with the town bylaw. There you go. Consistent with the bylaw of commercial operations.
Second.
Any discussion about that?
We've had lots.
Everybody understand it?
Yes.
Okay, so I made a motion. Constance seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. It's a twenty-day appeal process, so.
All right.
You're set to go.
All right.
You should be good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for what you're doing with your property.
Driving.
We really appreciate it.
Okay, we do. Okay, the second order of business is seven oh eight Sanford Road. Hearing on petition of Dr. Satbik, Bigor, no, okay, DMD LLC for finding that the expansion of the existing building shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law, Article Two, Section two, five, three, four, and/or special permit. Subject permit is, subject property is located at seven oh eight Sanford Road. Westport map is shown on, such as map thirty lot forty-seven. I'm going to recuse myself from this because I'm a.
Patient?
Westport Dental is my wife and, and myself dentist that we see quite often, way too often. So I'm going to recuse myself and I am going to assign, and because of that, Jerry is going to take over as chair for this meeting. Jerry, it's all yours.
And then the voting members are going to, well, he'll figure that out.
Your end.
Yeah, you don't want to have anything happen to the dental chair should this go.
You want to take your, get your sign here if I got to move over there.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
You don't want to be confused.
I don't want them getting mad at me for the things that I do.
I'm not even sitting up here. I'm going back there. Okay.
Get the camera. I've been dying to do that, I know.
Our corrupts, right? Okay, all right. Did you, did you read the?
No.
I did.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So we just got to say the voting members.
Yeah, okay, so the voting members, I guess, will.
Be all of us.
Be all of it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, George, Constance, Cynthia, Janice.
Yep. Yeah, he's not voting.
Ralph's not voting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Not me. Okay, all right, so anyway, and you know the meeting's being recorded.
Yes.
So, okay, so, like to hear from you.
Certainly. Good evening. For the record, my name is Peter Solino. I'm a lawyer. My address is five fifty Locust Street in Fall River. I represent the applicant petitioner, Dr. Shashadri, who's immediately here to my right. The proposal before the board is for a finding that the proposed expansion of his dental office is not detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm certain that the board is aware that they have the ability to make that finding, and so I'll cut right to the chase, which is to say, we need to demonstrate to you why the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is already there. And so I'd submit the following facts. The rear yard setback in this district is ten feet. As per the plan, the setback, even with the addition on the building, will still be a hundred and seventeen point four feet. So we're not any worse off for the neighbor to the east. Additionally, the neighbor to the east is Liberty Utilities, which is a public utility, obviously. So it's not like a residential use where somebody may allege that the encroachment upon their privacy is detrimental. So I think that's an important fact. Next, the side yard setback in the district is ten feet. And as you can see on the plan, even with the addition, Dr. Shashadri would hold the thirty-four point nine foot side setback on the southerly side of his building. Therefore, again, not more detrimental in the sense that it is not getting any closer to the neighbor. Next, the parking requirements, as per the engineered drawings, are twenty point five for this amount of square footage. We provide twenty-four. It should be noted for the record that the proposal adds four spaces to the existing parking area. And then finally, the additional lot coverage is still below the fifty percent allowance in that district. So for all of the foregoing reasons, I'd submit to the board that what he wants to do is not more detrimental than what's there. And in fact, based on the evidence presented, that you should be able to make the finding that this is appropriate.
Now, nothing changes in terms of where the patients enter. Is that correct?
Yeah, everything remains the same.
Okay.
Because the addition is to the backside of the property, not the front side of the property.
No, the way I read it, it appeared to me as you're going to be adding two rooms. Is that correct or?
We're actually adding four rooms.
I'm sorry.
Four rooms.
Four rooms.
Correct.
Okay.
Because the property initially also on the second floor had an option for four rooms. When I bought it from the previous owner in twenty fourteen, we're just taking off the option from having it upstairs and moving it back.
So what's, what's going to go upstairs?
It's just administrative office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not patients?
No.
I have a question. When I went to see the property, of course, it was very, you know, it was pouring rain. But it seemed like it's really, when you build out back there, that it's very, very close to a wetland. Is it, or was it just, I mean, with the fact that everything was being flooded? Is that problematic or?
Um, I don't.
It's northwest board, so it's pretty damp.
I can offer that on the plan, the wetlands line is shown.
Yeah, I.
So I think somewhat it's a little bit of an engineering question about what's, you know, close to the wetlands. But they have the wetlands flagged. It's a blue line on the plan.
We don't have color.
We don't have color.
Would you like me to approach and provide you this copy that has color?
It says overgrown brush area and then there's the, is, would it be the A? Is that the A line?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay. It all looked like wetland.
Well, because it's, it's northwest board, it all is wet.
Yeah.
And looking at the other thing, on the smaller thing, it actually doesn't even, like, doesn't even appear to be wetlands on his lot. But there is obviously some that has since.
I think one of the reasons why you got that feeling is because we cleaned up a lot of the brush and everything there and flattened it out.
Mm-hmm.
So when it was, in case it was raining when you went there, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it was just flooded.
Well, everything was flooded in a couple of days.
But it, but where you've got the new parking areas, it is, I, I'm not sure exactly what the, the scale, okay.
It's only these four new spaces, so it's like.
I, I got it. It's within, it's ver, I mean, the wetland comes right up to the parking area. Is that, that's not problematic for conservation?
Ralph, if, if, if it were that, you may.
It'd be, it'd be conservation.
Go to Conservation Commission anyway. When it comes in, if it gets approved by this board, when it comes in to me, it's going to Conservation, it's going to Water Health. So it is, okay.
So they may, yeah, so they may limit the parking spaces.
Or move them maybe, you know, further towards the building or something. I, it was just.
If it's an issue with conservation, Conservation will, will present with it.
Okay. Yeah, I understand, but I mean, it was, it was, there were frogs, you know, jumping around, so I was.
And I can also offer that the, we provide the necessary parking. So those four spaces, I don't think are a requirement of the building code, but rather a concession to show good faith. So if that were a concern, we could strike those parking spaces to truncate the amount of parking and still comply with the requirement.
Okay, that, that was really the only question I had.
Sure. Any other questions? None for me. Open it to the public?
Roger, as a, as a concerned citizen in town, do you have any questions?
Val? All right, okay, so.
I don't think Val's a, was a resident.
No issues at all?
No.
Looks like no issues. And all we got to do is find that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Is that correct?
That is correct. You can also, you can close the, the evidentiary portion of the hearing. And that, you close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and then, yeah.
Look, if there's nothing else, look for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, it says here that you have to find the Board of Appeals that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So the, it's substantially more detrimental.
Well, that's what I said.
Yep, yeah, yep.
Okay, um, okay then, so any discussion?
Not really.
No. It's more substantially detrimental to me because I hate the dentist, but.
See, I thought people hated lawyers.
I was just going to say that to him. See how we feel?
We've been here a couple of times today.
I don't hate them. I, I'm already salivating because I have this reflex, just talking about the dentist, so.
And not in a good way, huh?
I don't see a problem at all.
Okay.
And I think it's good that he's putting on the first floor than having dental patients traverse upstairs to increase your practice. And we all know how hard it is to get an appointment at a dentist's these days.
He has indicated that. Now, now I assume the upstairs rooms that are currently being used for dental work is.
No, we, since I bought it, we have not used.
Not, not since it, but I'm talking about in the past.
Yes, in the past.
Okay, so my, my, I, I don't know if it really matters.
No.
But I do want to say that maybe we could condition it that, because he has indicated that they're not going to use those for, for, for patients.
Well, you'd have to get more parking, I think, if he did.
Well, then, then maybe.
Problem.
Yeah.
Maybe it could affect it, so I'm just suggesting maybe that be a condition.
Why?
I don't see a reason why because I think, I think.
For the reasons you just said.
I think, I think if he makes it into, he'll have to come back and ask for more parking. If he wants to do reover all the upstairs, because it's not, it's not appropriate for patients anymore.
It's basically going to be a boardroom, a staff break area, storage area for the staff, a doctor's office with the shower and closet.
Yeah.
That's what's going to be there.
So you'd accept the condition if the board?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, we could.
I'm more than confident accepting it.
Yeah.
As we often do, it's just to put in there that, that this decision is made per the presentation, the plans, so forth. So I mean, it is taken care of from that because the, the presentation indicated that there will not be patients up there, so we've kind of covered that. I was just trying to make it.
Yeah, but, but again, you could see that he could sell it in twenty years and people might want to put patients up there. So I don't want to put a condition on his permit. I just want to say that it's per the plans and there's no.
Right.
Plans to be done upstairs. And if he wants to do something else upstairs beside dental offices, then they need to come back.
Right, there is a plan, and a plan is that there will not be patients.
Correct.
So, anyway, okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the.
It's a finding.
Finding.
Yeah.
Conditioned upon, you know, inconformance of the proposed plans.
I second.
Okay, now that's per, per the plans and presentation and, and application and the. Okay, so it's been moved in to find that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's the key words, okay? All right, it's been moved and seconded. It was seconded, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. I'll say, you know, there's a twenty-day appeal period and, you know, it's set to go.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Do you provide nitrous oxide?
Yes, we do.
I think we're doing this now that does not, and so.
A lot of them don't anymore. Not, not a lot of them do.
No?
No.
That's what I'm making.
She knows this.
I take that. I do. My old dentist in Watertown, I take that at the same time. We both did. Not a very good doctor. I, I literally, I'm, I'm literally salivating.
You made my life a lot easier tonight when you just put it in. You made my life a lot easier than saying I can recycle.
It all happened while it was fine. Why?
Okay.
No, he was doing whatever he not. It was awesome. It was, it was two doors, and then the city of Watertown.
I have two that I have.
I got called and chastised because I usually.
Okay, wait, we continue with our, our business part of this meeting.
Long-term trauma.
Thank.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have two sets of meeting minutes. I'll start off with August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Maria has provided us with the meeting minutes. They've been updated with every comments. And I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August twenty, twenty twenty-five.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Likewise, meeting minutes for September, I'm going to borrow this, okay?
Yeah, sure.
The September tenth, twenty twenty-five, Maria has provided the meeting minutes and has updated as appropriate. And I make a motion to, to approve the September tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You should jump in there, Janice.
I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm in kindergarten. I'm still learning. You're in first grade now.
Just so people know that you were here, I second it, so seconded by Janice.
Yeah, she's had a microphone and she hasn't used it.
I know.
Well, I'd be scared, but I'm listening and I'm learning.
Okay. I know that Ray isn't here, but we do need to continue on. One of the things that we put together some time ago and I sent everybody is a proposed change to our bylaws.
Oh, yeah.
Let me pull it out. It's two very simple changes. And I did talk to Attorney Blake about this. So what I am proposing is, under Section 2 Chair, it uses, it, I want to add the statement, right now, that, right now, if the chair is here, the chair becomes the chair for the meeting. If the chair isn't here, the vice chair becomes. And if either of us are here, then the rest of you.
Pen for ourselves.
Decide.
Select, you know, and I think it's like, we showed a plaster or something, you know, it gets to be. But anyway, what I'm proposing is to add a sentence that says, "The chair may assign the vice chair to preside over a meeting or a hearing." What that would allow me to, well, the chair to do is to, for a given meeting, have the vice chair chair the meeting while the chair is still there as a, essentially as a training tool to get comfortable with being the chair and the chair and, you know, for that meeting while, you know, the more experienced person is here to sort of help guide it through.
There is no one more experienced than Jerry.
But Jerry will never be chair. He's already identified that.
Really?
Correct?
It was years back.
He'll never take the chair.
I am reconsidering that if it becomes the situation, okay? So, you know, we can do it.
Okay.
I just did it.
You did it, right, yes. But you would prefer not to.
That's correct.
There is.
And, you know, I'm not getting any younger either, so.
Yes, I mean. Does anybody have any issue with that?
No.
I have no issue with it as long as it's consistent with any laws of this.
I checked with, actually Jeff thought it was a really good idea.
Yeah.
Because otherwise you just, if, if for some reason I don't show up and, you know, then.
Well, right now, like, it's always been the two of you. And Jerry's been chair, you're, you know, before I was probably born, but.
But that doesn't happen to you all the time, right?
I do.
I just liked.
The second one's actually one that.
Let me address that part.
I know, I was born by then.
In the past, and I did it once, I think I've told you folks this. I was concerned that the alternates never get an opportunity to really actually act right through the voting process. And so I thought, well, I'll step out and I'll sit, like Roger just did. I'll sit in the audience and, like, may believe I'm not here. And so the alternates would be able to do the entire hearing. And I did that. Well, I was later told that that was wrong.
Yeah.
I'm not supposed to do that. So I'm a little confused now. The chair can do it and sit in the audience.
But he can only give the chair to the vice chair. He can't give it to an associate member.
No, no, no.
No, that, yes, that's correct.
Right, that's the difference.
But what I'm saying is, why can't I, as just a regular member, sit in the audience so that an alternate can fill in?
Because it's the rules of alternates and regular members. I think that's what controls. And here is different because the vice chair is a regular member and you can pass it to a regular member. But I think that it, and I'm just talking out of my, you know what. But I think it has to do with that the alternate member and the full members are different categories.
Well, I'd like to see something.
I think you'd have to stay home and watch it from home. And then an alternate.
Right. Well, I don't really want to do that either. But what I'm saying is, I would like to see people who verbally told us that that isn't allowed, I would like to see a citation to know why. Because I still think it's a good idea.
I think we should.
To be able to do that.
I talked to Jeff Blake specifically about this. I showed him this. And I said, what do you think about this? He said, this first part, he said, it's absolutely, there's no problem with that at all. Matter of fact, you think it's a wonderful idea because it gives, it gives experience to the vice chair. And that's really what you need, you know, you know, to continue this process.
But did he address the one I'm talking about?
Now, the next one I'm getting to. And I talked to him about that. And he said, he said, if somebody really, really pushed hard, they might find it to be right on the edge. Let me read. The next one has to do with voting members. As.
Oh, yeah, because you've done that before, where you've taken a vote, yeah.
So.
We've had a little.
The, right now, essentially it says, if the regular members are here, they are automatically the ones who vote. The only time an alternate votes is if a, is if a regular member is either not here or recuses himself. Okay. And again, and I know Jerry has brought this up a couple times. It's, again, it's a training kind of a thing. We want Janice and, well, that was just. We want, you know, the alternates to have, to feel like they're part of the process. And so what I suggested, what it used to say, well, what it says now is, alternate member will only be seated if one of the five regular members is unable to vote to replace a regular member by a. Anyway, that's.
Where are you reading that?
I'm reading under Order of Business, Section 5, Paragraph D. The chair announces the board of members who will be seated on the petition. What I am suggesting is, we change it to, alternate members will only be seated if one of the five members is unable to vote or to replace a regular member by a majority vote of the regular members. What that allows you to do is, for say, this, you know, the hearing that we just had, which is relatively simple, we could just have the majority vote of the members saying, Janice, why don't you do this one? Even though we're all here, you know, why don't we have one of the alternates as a voting member? And again, Jeff thought it was a good idea. He said it stretches the rule, but it's, but it's, but if we put it in our, but if we put it in our own procedures, then that becomes, that becomes the rule.
Becomes okay.
Anybody have any issue with either of those?
No.
No.
Again, as an alternate member myself at one point, I think, I don't know if you would say the same thing. I think the more important thing is being part of the discussions. Then the vote is really.
Yes.
It kind of almost, I don't really sometimes want to vote, right?
Right.
But, so I don't, you know, here and there, I don't think they, I don't think an alternate member gained experience just by voting. I think they gained experience by participating.
Right.
Or giving, you know.
I'm trying to get there.
Yes.
Right, right.
But you can do whether you vote or not.
Right, and I know that.
Right.
But I'm okay.
But the voting part of it becomes now just that extra little piece that now you're really on the, not on the hook for it. But, you know, you know, you've got, you know, you've got, you know, skin.
And I also think, you know, we probably wouldn't put in the rules, but I think if you're going to say one day to make either George or.
What's her name?
Janice. I know Janice very well. A voting, even though they're all here, I think a conversation before the meeting is appropriate to make sure that they're comfortable.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. That's sort of nothing that you need.
And generally speaking, what, what my thought would be is that, is that in either case, either the chair or the member, you would tend to do that on cases that are not terribly comfortable. You're not going to do it on a 40B. You know, you're going to do it on something that's not terribly comfortable because you really want to build up a, you know.
You feel confident.
A confidence.
And I watched George for a long time. We were both quiet over here. But like, I'm feeling a little better that he's participating more. I'm like, okay, I'm almost there, maybe I can.
He's got an earwig in with, from me, so it's.
I would have liked to get it.
In my mind, it was a matter of what I'll call training.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yes, they're sitting here. By the way, I will tell you that for years, we've had alternates that we don't even see.
That's the thing. Exactly. It gives them a reason to show up.
And feel they're a part of it.
No, no, I love this.